All right, excellent. Thank you, Maurice, and welcome, everybody, to the October 11th regular meeting of Kimberly City Council. This is a bit of a special, it's a regular meeting. The agenda is kind of regular, but it is a special meeting in that it is the last meeting of this council before we head into the election on Saturday. And with four councillors retiring, we are going to have a very different and new council when we hit the next term. So what I would like to do before we get too far into the meeting tonight is I have some certificates that have been put together for councillors as a memento for the outstanding job everybody has done this term. And I would like to present these to you at the start of the meeting. Do we have a cameraman? We're gonna take pictures, right? So we got the certificates. We need a photographer. Come on, guys. Okay, so I'll call, I'll call. And first up is councillor Roberts. So I should also say that we'll keep comments from councillors until meeting. Say a few words. That will replace councillor. Next up councillor Goodwin. So much Kent for all your outstanding service. Other eleven year veteran, councillor Oakley. You had hair when you started. Kyle Dallow, councillor Dallow, come on up. So councillor McBain, next up. Oh, you've only served one term, but you did hear a lifetime.
Yeah.
So as I said, we'll have an opportunity for everybody to make a few comments at the end of the meeting tonight. All right, we have one late item identified in the agenda, and it has to do with the inaugural meeting. Anything else other than this, Maurice?
There's no further late item.
Okay, how about we deal with this item as item number five under new business? You okay with that? Okay, cool. So with that addition, could I have a mover to adopt councillor Goodwin? Thank you. Pardon me councillor McBain, seconds. All those in favor, motion is carried. Next up, we have adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting held on September 26th. Councillor Dallow moves and councillor Roberts seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, motion is carried. All right, we have a couple of delegations tonight. Good to have you in the room, Harley. It's been a while. A long while, actually. So first up, we have Harley Lee from BDO to present the draft financial statements for Bootleg Gap Golf Society. I know when I saw that, I thought Bootleg Gap. Yeah, time is marching on.
Yeah, so this is just some finalization of the society's financial statements. So you're all given a draft statement in advance, hopefully.
Yep.
And so, so it's really just to record to the city of Kimberly. And so really nothing too much to highlight. So basically, the proceeds that get out of the $3 million proceeds, approximately half of them were allocated for the sale of the assets held by the society. And then the city owned the other half of the assets approximately. So the land that the golf course was on, of course, was owned by the city. And then all their improvements in the buildings and additions depreciated down are what were sold. And so there's a small loss then on that disposition of the depreciated value. And then the cleanup expenses from January 1st until the time of the sale in February. And so then, in the end, approximately 1.6 million is what gets transferred from the society to the city.
All right, so this covered January, February of 2021.
Right, and the society continues to exist. But it's basically, so the step here is really getting everything off of its financial statements. And all the assets and liabilities being assumed by the city of what was remaining of the society. And so that's what this financial statement presents.
All right, council, any questions? Tidy bit of housekeeping. So there is a motion that is on the books here, and that is that council approve the 2021 financial statements for Bootleg Gap Golf Society. Councillor Goodwin moves, councillor Oakley seconds. Further discussion? Go ahead councillor Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. I know this is about the financial statements. What has to take place now to dissolve the full, the actual society?
So now it's more of a legal matter. So it did dissolve.
Sorry, go ahead Maurice. What was that?
So the society was dissolved as of December 31st, 2021. And these are the 2021 financial statements.
Okay, thank you. So it's done.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for the clarification, Maurice. Anything else for Harley? Call the question. All those in favor, the opposed, motion is carried.
Good.
You're done. That was.
And so there will be some, just some documents for signing on the approval.
Excellent. Thanks so much, Harley.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for being here. We'll see you soon. Okay, Sergeant Woodcox. This is the 2022 second quarter report, RCMP report. Welcome, Steve. Good to have you back.
Good to be back, Mr. Mayor and council. How's everyone this evening?
Oh, thank you.
Could not be better.
Good. This is gonna be the second quarter report, and this encompasses the months of July, August, and September of 2022. So as usual, I've highlighted some incidents that happened over the quarter. This last quarter, we had 537 files as opposed to the quarter before, which was 430, which isn't unusual. It's a summer month. We see increased calls for service. One topic that we usually talk about is mental health. We've actually seen a decrease for the first time in a while from, it was 24 the previous quarter to 18. So that's positive. And we hope to see some of that, although that is an area that spikes in numbers all the time. Assaults, we had 15 assaults this quarter as compared to 10 the quarter before, so that's an increase. There was a few assaults who were related to one individual, which caused a little bit of spike in that as well. July Fest, I wanted to mention something about that. July Fest, we saw some minor incidents for public intoxication, some minor property damage. A number of impaired drivers were taken off the road, which is very positive. But overall, for a community and the numbers that we saw was very well, people were very well behaved. I want to thank the city of Kimberly and the citizens. They put on a great event. And we did not see any major incidents, so we're all very happy about that. Another topic I want to speak to and has been in some of the social medias, the last few weeks, we've had a number of break-in enters to mainly construction site trailers and as well as sheds, so sheds that are attached to homes. There didn't have any houses broken into, but majority, if not all of these, were related to the theft of tools. So after the second break-in, I did put a media release out to make mainly the construction workers aware of this was happening. We've seen this happen in Kimberly and Cranbrook. What I can say is, after the first one, we were able to get some video evidence to identify a vehicle that we believed was involved in this. We believe it's the same person involved in majority of these thefts. And I can say a couple of days ago, if, last week, that vehicle is reported stolen. So we did recover that vehicle, and there are charges pending against one individual for the theft of that vehicle. I can also say that one officer received some information, recovered about $15,000 worth of tools, and those tools have been turned back to the owner. So some positive news, there still is a lot of outstanding property missing. And we encourage the public, as we always do, to call us if they have any tips. We do believe we know some of the individuals involved, but we still need some more evidence to bring some charges to light. So again, if anyone knows anything, we definitely would appreciate the call from the public because many times, as I've stood up here in the past, one of those little minute details certainly leads to breaking the case and hopefully an arrest in some of these cases. As schools start, we're involved in the schools again. I did a talk the other day at the alternative school. That's something we're trying to remain vigilant with, is going to the schools and trying to build a relationship with the students. And part of that is going and doing some school talks. We're still feeling the effects of having a number of people off. So we're probably running at about 50% right now. So we have four members that are off sick, and we have one that's transferred. So the last few months have been difficult, but there are gonna be some more people, hopefully, coming to fill in some of those holes in the future, so. And I'm open to any questions, if anyone has any.
All right, thanks, Steve. I'll start off with one. I wonder if you could make a comment about files assisting other detachments in the public? There was a bit of a spike happening there. Can you just talk to that a bit?
Yeah, certainly. So in the summer, sometimes other detachments will get a hold of us to investigate crimes or take statements for matters that may have happened in the other jurisdiction, but some of the witnesses live here. So those are just requests from other detachments. There could be a crime that was committed in Calgary. Some people live in Kimberly, and they're asking us to go and carry on party investigations because some of the people actually live in town here.
Okay.
So I think those numbers spiked just because of summer months again.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Council, further questions or comments? You're off easy tonight.
Yeah, like I said, if anybody has questions, I'm certainly willing to answer them.
We know where you live.
I don't know about that, but you know where I work, sir, that's for sure.
Which is where you live these days.
It is.
So thanks very much, Steve. Appreciate you coming in tonight. The motion on the table. Do we have a motion to accept the report? I guess we don't need to do that, do we? Okay, cool. Dismissed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have a good night.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good evening, Steve. Okay, first up tonight, under bylaws, permits, and policies, we have the official community plan amendment, bylaw 2723 for 520 Wallinger. The motion on the floor is that council approve first reading of this particular bylaw. And we'll, there's actually two. We'll start with this one. And councillor Kittle moves and councillor Dallow seconds. Discussion. You gonna speak to this, Troy?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm looking up at the.
I was hiding over in the corner here.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I'll just, as you said, there's two recommendations here, two bylaws under consideration. I'll just speak to them both at once, since they're both related. And if there's any questions, I can, I'm happy to help if I can. And I also like to point out that the applicants are also present here in the room, Jill and Alister over here. So if there's any other questions you have for them. So yeah, so this proposal involves an amendment to the official community plan land use map as well as the zoning map. This is the property at 520 Wallinger Avenue has been operating as a church for, well, forever and ever, I guess. For as long as the church has been there, which is not sure exactly how long. But Jill and Alister are looking to purchase that building and renovate that. So the OCP and zoning amendments are necessary to change the designation for those property. Or, yeah, for, there's three parcels involved, so to change the designation of those properties from institutional to commercial. The, so far, we don't have a lot of information on the overall plans for the property, but they've indicated the desire to redevelop for cafe and bakery use. And like I said, that in order to see that happen and get the pieces in place for that will require consideration of this rezoning and OCP amendment. So council gives first reading tonight. We will continue with our review and circulate to Ministry of Transportation to see if there's any feedback there. So we'll be following up here with future council meetings with additional readings and consideration of public hearing.
All right, excellent. Councillor McBain.
Yeah, I just wanted to voice my support for this. I think, I think it's a practical use for for a building that, you know, I don't think anybody really knew what the future of it would be. And, you know, certainly, we are, as a town, looking for more, more commercial, more industrial type of businesses here. And, you know, I know the applicants already have a successful business that they're looking to expand. And that, to me, that's a success story in town, so I'm in full support of this change.
Thank you, Jason. Councillor Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to reiterate, the rezoning would be requiring the approval of Ministry of Transportation. Is that because of its proximity to what we class as the highway?
That's correct. There's legislative requirements that any zoning amendment within 800 meters of the highway requires their review and approval. So that's just about all of Kimberly in our case, yeah.
Yeah, did you say 800 meters?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Further? Go ahead councillor Oakley.
I have a question, if Jill is willing to answer it. Are you going to be asking of anything from Ministry of Highways as part of the process?
Yeah, so we have already actually started the process with the ministry because we, I don't know if anyone's noticed, but we desperately have needed a crosswalk in that area for years. So they already know that we had the intention to buy the property as well as, we've already had conversations with people within the ministry that the closest crosswalks are at the top of the, over Wady Hill, for lack of better words, and the lights. So they already know of our intentions to make some changes in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Further, council? So I'll just have a kind of reiterate or build on what councillor McBain had said. We have a scarcity of commercial property here in Kimberly. In fact, it's, it's hard to believe how scarce it is. Stoke is not only one of the fastest growing businesses that we have in town, but it's also one of our larger employers. I'm not sure of the exact number of employees, 65 employees. So I think everybody knows that when you're building on economic development, growing from within is a lot easier than attracting from without. And I think this is an awesome reuse of a building in town. It's gonna really create a vibrancy around that corner, more so than it's already there. Okay, hearing no further comments, we'll call the question. This was, this is on the OCP amendment bylaw. All those in favor? That motion is carried. And the second motion is around the zoning bylaw. Pardon me, and it's that council approved first reading of bylaw 2724, the amendment to 2724 of the zoning bylaw. Councillor Kittle moves and councillor Robert seconds. Any further discussion? Councillor Oakley.
I have a question for Troy. How far do you fan out when you're seeking feedback for the rezoning?
We're required to send a notice to owners of property and residents of property within 50 meters of the subject property.
Five zero meters, 50. Further?
I just, I was wondering, is that a, are you actually gonna catch anybody? I'm just, I'm calculating 50 meters, you know, 150 feet. Yeah, I guess, one or two.
In that area, there'll be multiple properties notified, yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Further? Call the question. All those in favor, the opposed, motion is carried. Excellent. Best of luck, guys, with the redevelopment. Thanks, everybody. Okay, next up, we have another zoning amendment bylaw, 2727 for 522 Forest Crown Drive. And the motion on the table is that council provide first reading to the, to this bylaw amendment. Mover, please. Councillor McBain, thank you, and councillor Kittle seconds. Troy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yeah, there's, again, there's kind of two parts recommended here. But firstly, the proposed bylaw 2727 is in response to application received to rezone the property at 522 Forest Crown Drive from the current R9 zoning to an R1 zoning. The owner of that property, it's currently a vacant property. They're looking to build their home on it and would like to have an opportunity to do a an accessory dwelling on their either suite within the building or a detached accessory dwelling. But of course, that requires a change in the zoning to accommodate that. When the application was originally received, they were proposing to match the zoning that was applied to the Phase 6 of Forest Crown, the Ponderosa Drive, Ponderosa View lots. That zoning there is, was a new zoning for the areas, the R8A zoning, and that specifically allowed for some accessory dwelling units in addition to the principal dwellings. But with council's recent adoption of bylaw 2722 and the amendments that were included in that to the R1 zone, the applicant had revised their application to request the R1 zoning. Just to, which gives them similar option there to develop an accessory dwelling. So staff's recommending that we proceed with further consideration of that application. And then again, we'll be coming back to propose scheduling the public hearing later on this calendar year. If I may just speak to the second recommendation, or do you wanna?
Let's do this one first and go to the second. Okay, council, any questions? Councillor Roberts.
This, Troy, this will also require a question of the neighborhood.
That's correct, yeah, part of the process.
Called outside of the purview that currently allows for auxiliary buildings.
Yeah, presently, there's, there's no provision in the R9 zone to allow for an accessory dwelling.
Possibility that the people who bought this particular area are not gonna be least but interested in auxiliary building. Or not, you know, okay.
Potentially, yeah.
Just wondered, okay, thank you. So I knew there was some places that had the auxiliary building, and I kind of thought it was all encompassing. So I'm just taking on that.
Yeah, only, at present, only parts of Forest Crown would allow for accessory dwelling, yeah.
All right, thank you.
So Troy, just for council's edification, maybe remind us of the process. We're doing first reading now. Next step, we go to notice to neighbors. Can you maybe just explain?
Yeah, so.
We're gonna go forward with that.
Similar to the other proposals, I will do first reading tonight if council supports that. We'll follow up at a subsequent meeting with recommendation around second reading and a proposed date for the public hearing. And then, you know, prior to the public hearing is when we'll send notice out to neighbors.
Okay. Thanks for that, Troy.
You bet.
Anything further? Call the question. All those in favor? That motion is carried. The second part of this is that council approved first reading, whoops. Am I on the right? Nope, that was Wallinger. Is that council direct staff to continue the zoning review and propose additional text or map amendments to allow for a greater supply and variety of housing throughout the community. Can I have a mover? Councillor Dallow moves, councillor Kittle seconds. All right, discussion. Go ahead, Troy.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just, again, I mentioned earlier the council's recent adoption of bylaw 2722 that included a series of amendments to the zoning bylaw and specifically including the R1, R2, R3, C1, and CP1 zones. And through, through that discussion, we'd identified the potential for sort of extending that review and looking at some of the other areas of the community, some of the other zones that weren't impacted by that bylaw. There is some, some other zones in town that do only allow for, you know, for single detached housing only with no provision for accessory dwellings at all. So, you know, we think that it would, there's merit there to consider extending that review to those other areas and looking at options and opportunities for increasing the options for housing in other areas of the community as well. So this would just kind of, you know, reinforce council's desire to look at that and try to find those additional opportunities for housing elsewhere in the community. We suspect that it probably, you know, sometime in the new year, probably early in the new year, that we'd be coming back with some of those amendments for a council to consider.
Thank you for that, Troy. Council, go ahead, Daryl.
So Troy, I have a question for you. The, you know, there are some places in town that do not allow for an accessory building. So could you give me a couple of examples of those? And why, and also why you would recommend not changing those?
Yeah, so I, there's a few different areas. So I mentioned earlier, there's the R8 and R9 zones. Stop at the top of my head, there's R7 as well. Sorry, I should have had my list together for that question. I'm sorry. There, I want to say there's at least a handful of other zones that are, that are limited to single detached housing only with no provision for accessory dwellings. So those ones, and again, this, we would include in our review, would just be a, you know, a full review of those other zones that haven't been already considered to see what, you know, what other additional opportunities there are for, for at least some accessory dwelling unit options for current and future property owners. And just to clarify, we are recommending that we review that and that, you know, the similar review should be applied throughout the community, so.
Go ahead.
So I guess just to add to that, Troy, I'm, so what you're saying then is this review will, will open up potentially some neighborhoods that have not been affected. And you may recommend that they go to, you know, a different zoning so that they could develop, you know, additional housing, carriage house, or whatever. And the reason I'm asking this is that it's a big question, right? It's, it's not just Kimberly. I've been reading in other cities, other cities are grappling with this too hugely right now, Calgary specifically. And I guess my, my big question is, when I'm reading about this, is if you have a neighborhood that is to be kept as single-family housing and not to be affected at all, not to be changed, I'd just like to know, on what basis is that?
Yeah, so just to step back a moment and clarify, the previous amendment applied to quite a wide area of the city. The R1 and R2 and R3 zones make up by far the majority of the residential lands. So those lands are. The R one and R two and R three zones make up by far the majority of the residential lands, so, so those lands have already been, you know, part of that review and, and it's, you know, going back to the objectives of that review was to try to identify ways and, and, and means of reviewing the zoning to find those opportunities to open up flexibility to encourage more housing throughout the community, encourage a more diverse housing supply and hopefully a more available and affordable housing supply. This application tonight for this particular property in Forest Crown is, is an example of, there is other property owners, other homeowners out there that, that are interested in having those similar opportunities and having those, those similar flexible options apply to their, to their site. So, you know, I think that, you know, there's a, you know, in some cases, there's an expectation that, you know, when you buy your property, that the zoning never changes on your property or around you, but when communities like ours and, and most throughout the country are facing, you know, urgent, urgent housing needs, we, we really need to, you know, have a look at how we, how we manage and how we regulate housing and how, how we, how we set up our zoning and make sure that we're encouraging opportunities for as many housing, as many, many households as possible. So has to do with, you know, attracting people to community, it has to do with keeping people in our community. And really, we think that at a, at a bare minimum, any property in town should at least be able to have provision to allow for an accessory dwelling.
Go ahead.
Final comment. I, I appreciate your comments, Troy. I, I'm not opposed to this, I'm just trying to get to the nitty gritty of are there those sacred neighborhoods that are going to be? It's very interesting to watch this go on in Calgary, and I think we're going to go through the same thing here in Kimberly. Anyway, thanks for your response, I appreciate that, Troy.
Thanks, Counselor Oakley. Further comment? Council? So, so I have a couple of comments, and I guess I'm not going to support this. Not because it's not a good idea, or in principle, I do support what we're attempting to achieve. I think it, it has to do with priority and timing. We are really struggling to keep up with getting dwellings in place right now to keep up with the population growth and as has already been mentioned, with the rezoning that we've already done, we've covered the largest portion of the community already with an opportunity to do this. And I think that with the limited staff that we have in planning right now, the priority is to get development permits and building permits through so that we can add to the housing inventory in town. No matter who I talk to, no matter who I think anybody talks to these days, this is the single highest priority we have as a community is to get inventory in place right now. And I don't think in the short term, this is going to help that. As I said, in principle, I agree with it coming back, but I don't think this is the right time. Go ahead, Counselor Dallum.
Listening to the discussion brings up an interesting point that municipalities across the country are struggling to fix something that isn't being addressed on a, a higher level. And I think that the mayor's right in this case where the staff hours should be put more towards the building permits and existing pieces rather than challenging this problem at this time. I think this is something that will be better suited later. R eight, R eight A, R nine, there's not a lot of that in town. I think that, I agree, staff time is valuable and we need to focus that where it needs to be right now.
Thank you, Counselor Dallum. Any last, Counselor Goodwin, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess, I, so I, I see a value if you've just gone through a comprehensive assessment of zoning in some of our zones. And everything is fresh in your mind, it actually may be more efficient to immediately move into an assessment in a few other zones because the templates are all there, you know what you're doing and the workflow would flow smoothly. Having said that, are we experiencing a backlog with building permits? Are, are we particularly stressed at this point with that? And would not doing this make that easier? I, I'm not sure. Would staff care to answer?
Go ahead, Troy.
Yeah, thank you. It's a good question. I would say actually on, on the building permit side of things, there, there's, there's no backlog at all. We're, we're definitely keeping up on building permits. I don't know that there's any building permits for dwelling units that are being delayed at all, other than that, the fact we might be waiting for some additional details on, on a few certain applications, but on that, on that aspect, there's no backlog at all. There's definitely been a backlog on some zoning files and, and some, some, you know, these couple here tonight are example of that, that certainly has taken us a little longer to, to get in front of council than, than has been the case in the past, but we are experiencing a high volume. It's evidence later on here in the, in the quarterly activity report about planning applications. But I think as, as Counselor Goodwin said there, there's some merit in, in continuing that review and, and identifying those opportunities. It's much lighter review than what we went through for by law twenty seven twenty two. I think there's certainly some efficiencies there to gain to kind of keep momentum going. But, you know, and I think it's, it's manageable for us to, to work on that with the other zoning and, and planning applications that are in progress. But like I said, yeah, there's, there's been, there's been no delays on any, on any building permits.
Counselor Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I know that we've opened up the opportunity for accessory buildings in a lot of places already. But I still think that there's a place for single residential properties. I don't think everybody wants to have to build an accessory building on their property, nor do they want their neighbors to do it. They probably are prepared to pay the tax on a more expensive house or pay the tax on a more expensive piece of property and have no intentions of ever wanting to have an accessory building. So I'm not really sure that we need to make sure that every single plot of land in our community has access to an auxiliary piece of property. I think there's room to leave some of it standalone one residence. Just my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor Roberts. Counselor McBane, then Counselor Oakley.
Yeah, I think the key thing here, I think Counselor Dallum and Mayor McCormick have brought it up, is, is the priority. So this is, this is a type of thing for me that I, it's, it's a nice to have. And if we've got, if we've got a backlog in, in any, in any of our work that staff is experiencing, I think the focus should be on getting that work done, and then we can bring this back at, at a later time. To me, it just makes sense.
Counselor Oakley.
Well, I actually support this, this evening for the following reason. I, I have heard now for years, a lot of pressure to staff about making sure they bring forward opportunities and possible zoning changes to bring in more housing. So here we are, here we have one. And I, I think it's a, you know, I think this is not, I think it should be supported. I, I think that staff should be supported in bringing this forward. And I, I intend to vote to support this.
Thank you, Counselor Oakley. Counselor McBane, further?
Yeah, I, I, I agree to some extent. I think we just went through, you know, a major, a major zoning by law amendment, obviously, and we still, there's going to be lag time before we see the results of that, just that work in general. So I just, I mean, again, I, I, I don't think that this is a terrible idea. I just think the priorities should be in getting the work done that's, that's on our table right now.
Further comment? We'll call the question then. The, the question on the floor is that council direct staff to continue the zoning review. All those in favor? Counselor Goodwin, Oakley, and Kiddo. Those opposed? The, the motion is defeated. Thanks for the, for the good input on that, folks, and thanks, Troy, as well. Appreciate that. Okay, next up, we have a, under by law twenty seven twenty eight, a covenant removal, I guess, for lack of a better term, for the units on Stemwinder Drive. And the motion on the floor is that council approve first, second, and third readings of by law twenty seven twenty eight to delegate authority to an officer or designated employee to authorize future requests to release rental covenant K P one zero zero six eight from title on lots one through ten on Stemwinder Drive. Mover, please. Counselor Kiddo, thank you. And Counselor Dallum seconds. Troy? First of all, which are the one to ten units? I was having trouble ciphering exactly which we were talking about.
Yeah, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the ten lots here, the ten units, I guess, ten lots is probably a better description. These are the ones on the, sorry, I'm gonna say, sorry? Yes, well, there is, actually, there's playground on either side, I guess. There's, or the basketball court on one side, playground on the, on the one side, yeah, but the playground side of Stemwinder Drive. If you're driving to Trickle Creek Lodge, it's on your left side, there's ten lots there. There's, I want to say there's four houses under construction or finished construction or so, so far there. Those, those lots were kind of sitting unsold for, for quite a few years, and in the last couple of years, there's been a lot of action on those, and I, I think just about every one of them has, has been sold to, to a private owner now. And like I said, there's, there's been a few permits issued there for housing. On, I think probably most of those transactions, the purchasers were inquiring about this particular covenant, and we had indicated that, you know, you know, we were looking into it and, and part of our review there had, had identified that, you know, we probably would support a request to release that, but we've now finally had our first formal request to, to release that covenant, and so in anticipation of further requests, we want to recommend here that we put a delegation by law in place to, to make that a little bit more efficient process. So this request comes from one of the, one of the recent purchasers there at two forty five Stemwinder Drive. And this is related to the rental covenant K P one zero zero six eight. We've had similar requests like this to, for similar covenants in, in different, different areas there. In this particular case, the, the R T A zoning does allow for the construction of a principal dwelling and a secondary suite. And also that those, either or both of those units may be used for, for short-term rental or tourist accommodation. The terms of the covenant actually require that, that, that at least one and, and, and in some cases, both of those units, that they must be used for short-term rental or long, or, or tourist accommodation. And of course, that's, doesn't sit well with some of the purchasers that want to, want to, you know, build, build a home for themselves and, and and it also doesn't, I guess, balance well with our desire for more long-term rental in town. If, if the covenant is forcing people to use it for tourist accommodation when, you know, accessory uter, accessory unit or, or either of the units may be used for, for long-term residential use, so staff is recommending that you support those requests and, and approve the first three readings of a delegation by law to delegate authority to staff to be able to sign off those release requests. If council supports that, then we'll be coming back at a future meeting with adoption of that by law.
All right, excellent, Troy. So just for clarification, what this is doing is removing the requirement, but the zoning still allows for tourist accommodations, should the owner of that house wish to use it for that purpose?
That's correct. The zoning allows for either the units to be used for short-term rental or for long-term residential use. It's the covenant that mandates that at least one or both of the units get used for short-term rental.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Council, questions? Counselor Kiddo?
Just a comment, really. You know, I understand the, the intent of the covenant on there was to encourage tourist accommodation availability in the community. With the lack of development up there, it's probably been unsuccessful. I don't think it's going to stop people from developing for short-term rentals, but I think we're beyond the point where we have to dictate what a property owner can, can or cannot do with their property.
Thanks for that, Counselor. Further? All right, hearing none, call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried. All right, we have a couple of bylaws for adoption. First up is the five-year financial plan, twenty twenty two to twenty twenty six. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Dallum, thank you. And Counselor Roberts, seconds. Jim, is there anything new that we need to cover off here?
Nothing new to report, Mr. Mayor. This has been in front of council, I guess this is the third time, contains a number of financial plan amendments as permitted by the community charter, and if adopted tonight, those, those changes will go through and will be authorized to undertake that, that spending.
All right, excellent, thank you. Council, questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? The motion is carried. And the second by law for adoption is the permissive tax exemption by law. That council adopt permissive, permissive tax exemption by law, number twenty seven twenty six for twenty twenty two. Mover, please. Counselor Kiddo, thank you. And a seconder. Counselor Roberts? Any discussion? Think we've covered this in a fair amount of detail in the previous meeting. Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Next up, we have a development variance permit for approval for four forty Deer Park Avenue. This is the duplex that we discussed at the previous meeting. Mover, please. Counselor McBane, thank you. And Counselor Goodwin, seconds. Discussion. Anything further on this, Troy?
Nothing really to add other, just to confirm that we received no submissions from any adjacent residents or property owners and recommend approval of the variances.
All right, awesome, thank you. Last call. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. And the second development, second permit is a development permit for four hundred Stemwinder Drive, and the, the motion is that council approve the D P to allow for the installation of a fence. So this four hundred Stemwinder is Mountain Spirit. For those that don't recognize that address. Mover, please. Counselor Kiddo, thank you. And Counselor McBane, seconds. Discussion. Go ahead, Troy.
Yes, thank you. This development permit pertains to strata lots one and two, which are the two units on the main level, the former restaurant and spa spaces in the, in the main floor of Mountain Spirit Resort. Their council had previously approved variances and development permits for, for renovation of those to develop for, for tourist accommodation. Those renovations are well underway and, you know, I guess nearing completion, a little ways off though, but they are wanting to install some fencing or you could almost call it railings, I guess, around the exterior patio areas. These are all ground level areas, but it's, so the, the fencing or railings are, are, are high enough to allow for some screening of those areas and that provides some, some attractive outdoor space for, for each of those new units that are being created there. And the layout and design there still allows for people, users of the facility to go back and forth to the, the learning area there of the ski hill and have direct access to the, to the ski hill there. So staff are recommending that we move forward on this one, and the applicants have indicated that the, the strata has indicated their support for the proposal as well.
Just the six-foot fence, is there no concern with the fire department on that? Bring that out front? Or is that something that they're really not concerned about in this case?
No, it, it's essentially just enclosing the, you know, if, if they were above the ground at all, they'd, they'd be required as a kind of a railing or, or enclosure of the, the outdoor balcony areas, but with them being on the main floor, you know, there's no concern with, with enclosing those areas, no.
Thank you. Further, council? Hearing none, all those in favor? That motion is carried. All right, on to new business. First up, we have the third quarter building report. It doesn't show a motion here, but the motion is to receive the building report. Could I have a mover? Counselor McBane, thank you. And Counselor Dallum, seconded that. All right, discussion. Did you want to start with some comments, Troy?
Yeah, not, I mean, I'll just comment on a few things there, so I think the, the trend so far this year is commenting about the, the increase in planning application indicated by the, the fees we're collecting around that. I mentioned before, there's Um, I mentioned before, there's we presently don't have a a great uh tool or mechanism to um, I mean, we certainly track all the applications, but we we uh. We don't have the ability kind of backcast and compare that to other other quarters very easily. Um, but so the easiest way for us to track that is just by tracking the fees, um, and it shows that uh. The third quarter this year, we've pretty much matched the the previous year's uh total fees and and uh certainly significantly ahead of all previous uh uh three third-quarter marks. Uh, building permit activity continues uh pretty steady, um, certainly construction values. Um, this is just obviously a bit of a reflection of the the cost of construction nowadays, uh, but values are are significantly up for the third quarter. Uh, the number of new dwelling units is um is is down compared to uh uh previous couple of years. Um, and like I said before, that just to clarify, there's no, there's no, you know, nobody's waiting for a building permit for any new units. Um, those are all uh, you know, you know, being being managed and and uh issued within our normal uh timeframes there. Um, and other than that, um, you know, just just again to reflect on the uh. Total uh, you know, uh, building permit fees collected, uh, we're we're certainly uh. Uh, looking towards a near uh possible record year or near record year for sure, in terms of uh total buildings and and overall permit numbers.
It is robust. Thank you, Troy. Counsel? Comments? Go ahead, Councilor Oakley.
Uh, just a quick comment, I it'll be very interesting to see, uh, first of all, where interest rates go, and then if the impact is uh. You know, this time next year, you'll be able to see what what's happening possibly, but uh, you know, I'm assuming interest rates are going to slowly climb, continue, so. It may um may slow a little bit, but so far, we're not seeing that.
Just a comment. Thank you, Councilor Oakley, a good comment. Further? Go ahead, Councilor Dallam.
Just a quick question on the um. The lower number of new building permits, does that include secondary suites, or is a secondary suite come under a different classification such as renovation?
Um, you're just looking at the the total number of permits on on the, what is that page? Three or so, I guess. Um, tho- though any permits for accessory units are included in there, uh, there's a there's a uh specific permit category for that. Um, and so that it that list there or that uh summary of all the permit types, that includes whether it's new construction uh or renovations to existing buildings.
Thank you.
Further, Counsel? Uh, I guess, I guess I only have one uh comment to make, Troy. We definitely are having a robust year from several uh standpoints, uh, but the one concern that. Um, kind of lays out on the page there is the number of new dwelling units uh that we're doing on an annual basis. Um, we need to be doing roughly sixty to sixty-five units a year in order to keep up with population growth. And if you do the math on the last five years, I mean, we are, we are way, way under uh that number. And uh, we're not going to get there with single-family homes, uh, which is the majority of the homes that we have in Kimberly. We have to get there through. Um, uh, first of all, multi-unit, but more importantly, multi-unit uh apartment-style rental complexes. It's the only way we're going to get the number of dwellings up. I know we have um, you know, several opportunities uh that are sitting in front of us in the queue, and uh I can only hope that both the developers as well as us uh marshal those forward as fast as we can. Uh, it's the only way we're going to relieve the pressure. Okay, last call for comments. Call the question on receipt, all those in favor? That motion is carried. Thanks for that, Troy. Okay, next up, we have a uh development referral uh from the RDK. The referral is basically for uh comment. Um, it's a subdivision just outside the um, just outside the city boundary uh in Meadowbrook along Meadow Meadowbrook Settlement Road. And the motion is that council direct the manager of planning to provide a referral response of uh quote. Uh, approval not recommended due to potential increased risk of fire spread between properties and jurisdictional boundaries in the unprotected area, close quote. Uh, could I have a mover, please? Councilor Kittle, thank you, and uh, seconder, Councilor Roberts. All right, uh, discussion. Go ahead, Councilor Oakley.
Oops, um, I'm I'm curious about this one. Um, they uh. Uh, have voted tw- uh several times historically to uh have to to deal with risk when it comes to fire and not have. Fire departments, so I I don't understand why we are being asked to um. Get into the thick of this. I mean, there have been referendums, um.
Yeah, this isn't about fire protection. Uh, it's it's about the subdivision of a property. We are going back and saying because there is no fire protection. You know, it's going to provide a risk and therefore not recommending the subdivision.
But again, it's out of our um boundaries. It's it's not our bound, it's not, to me, it's not really our business. I don't understand why.
Well, it's because it's adjacent, uh, you know, to the city of Kimberly, and we're being asked, do we have an interest? Uh, and if the answer is no, we don't have an interest, that's how we respond. This time, we're saying, yes, we have an interest. Uh, with all of the increased fire, you know, uh, increased focus on fires these days. That close to our city property, if in fact, um, you know, something happened and there was a fire there, it it could have an impact on the community. So that's all it is. It's, do we have an interest? The interest is is fire, and we're basically saying staff is recommending that we don't, we tell them that we don't recommend it. Now, with referrals, that doesn't mean it dies. It just means that it is a referral, and we say we prefer not. Uh, that doesn't mean that the regional district is not going to approve it. Right. Yeah. Is that, does that help?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I'm gonna, I thi- I would rather, if you're going to do a referral process, I'd rather um just. Go straight to the point and say, are you going to have a third referendum to put fire services proper out there? You know, that, that's the question that needs to be answered again, but obviously, it's been answered twice already, so. I don't know, I.
Actually, four times.
Has it four times? It's, okay, it's it's been around. I I guess I um. I don't know, I, to me, it's their risk. I I, you know, I'm going to vote against this. It's it's their risk, and I I, you know, I don't think um, I again, they may not do anything anyway, but.
Yeah. Uh, did you want to make a comment, Scott, or clarification?
Um, I don't know if I can clarify it any better than it has already, but um. You know, if your neighbor had a pile of wood piled up next to his house, it would become your business, he'd be concerned about it. I I think the referendum on fire protection out there, um, coming back four times demonstrates there is fire risk out in Meadowbrook. We just don't want that fire risk approaching us from that direction. It's kind of our uh exposed flank. So we we do have some concerns. Um, we don't have a lot of protection. We don't have any protection uh through Taylor's Mill. Um, so if fire was to happen outside of our borders in the regional district, quite likely, it would spread into Taylor's Mill and uh and beyond. So we'd we'd just like to shore up that flank by having some influence on limiting the amount of development that can happen alongside our border.
I think um, one of the other, I'm kind of thinking out loud here right now, but by sending a message about how important fire protection is, maybe the next time. Residents out there are looking to uh do a referendum on uh whether or not they want fire protection, uh, these are some of the things that have to be considered. It was soundly defeated the last time, yeah. Uh, further comments? All right, we'll call the question then. All those in favor of the motion? I'm sorry? Is to not recommend, correct? Is to refer back to, you know, that to not recommend. Hey, all those in favor of pushing back? We are not in favor. Uh, those opposed? Um, uh, Councilor Oakley and Councilor Dallam are opposed? Did I get everybody? Okay, so that uh, the motion passes. Um, I suspect I had a conversation with Director Walter, you know, about this, and there are, you know, other issues, uh, you know, with the uh this particular subdivision, so it may in fact. Uh, come back at a later date in any event, so. All right, thank you for that. Next up, we have uh a rarity, actually. It's a notice on title uh for nine fifty-five Staples. And the motion is that the corporate officer be directed to file a notice in in the B C land title office. Um. Uh. I guess I have to read this. Um, a resolution relating to lot one and two, block forty-three, uh, better known as uh nine fifty-five Staples. Uh, of the community charter, uh, that made under section fifty-seven of the community charter for the property at nine fifty-five Staples, and that further information in respect of this matter. May be inspected at Kimberly City Hall, three forty Spokane Street during normal business hours. Um, do, well, let's get it on the floor first. Uh, motion, Councilor Dallam moves, seconder, please. Uh, Councilor McBane, uh, Troy, uh, what what's the infraction? Is it a building permit thing or?
Yes, uh, uh, most of the time, these are going to be building permit related, um, and in this particular case, um, it's just multiple infractions related to uh. Um, construction proceeding without um inspections and covering up work and not, you know, not responding to uh requests and direction to to. You know, fix things up and do it the right way. Um, and uh, so uh, staff is recommending that we proceed with a notice on title. Um, there's, you know, there's always potential that uh, you know, property can be put up for sale or changed hands, and uh notice on title is the certainly the most effective way to make sure that uh. Any prospective purchasers are aware of of um those potential issues. Um, and uh, you know, there's been uh this, just looking back here to refresh my memory, this this. Initial permit goes back to November twenty eighteen, so uh, we've been giving them chance after chance to uh get this uh fixed up and uh. And uh, we're ready to proceed with notice on title.
Yeah, thank you, Troy. We certainly don't get too many of those. Uh, most are resolved without uh having to do the notice. Uh, certainly in the regional district, um, you know, there's at least a half a dozen a month uh that are dealt with, uh, but the geography in the. Regional district is uh is a little bit different from what we have here in town. Okay, uh, further questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Okay, and last up under new business, we have uh, we have a check run in the order of uh five hundred and two thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. To be approved as paid. Council Roberts moves, and Councilor Dallam seconds. Any? Comments? Go ahead, Council Roberts.
It's basically business as usual, except for one large payment of a hundred and twenty-four thousand to stoic construction. Those are the folks that are working on Center Sixty-Four's roof and interior beams as well as their uh. They're just finishing up on the outer roof now, so they're 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 closing in on the end of their project there, so I'm, there's probably some more uh. Payments to be uh brought forth, but it's a fairly substantial one at this point.
All right, excellent, thank you, uh, thank you, Sandra. Uh, further questions or comments? Call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. All right, we have three, oh, sorry, item number five, uh, under new business was the uh inaugural meeting, and the motion on the floor. Is that um the inaugural meeting of council be held at the Kimberly Conference and Athletic Training Center on Monday, November the seventh at seven P M? And that the corporate officer be directed to publish the notice to the public. Councilor Kittle moves, Councilor Dallam seconds. Anything, Maurice? Comment?
No.
Uh, it'll be an awesome time. Um, call the question, all those in favor? That motion is carried. Got to show a little more enthusiasm for the new council, guys. Goodness. Okay, we have uh three items under uh, three items under correspondence. Now, this evening, uh, could I have a mover to accept? Uh, or receive? Thank you, Councilor Kittle, and Councilor McBane, seconds. Anything to uh extract here, counsel? Or staff? No action items? All right, call the question on receipt, all those in favor? The motion is carried. All right. So um, we will call uh for question period, um, as as we do each week. Um, members of the public may call, uh, the number to call is eight hundred seven four one seven one eight zero. And when prompted, the meeting number is two four eight three six two zero four one seven nine. Uh, and this is to do with anything relating to the me- meeting this evening. Any comments or questions with regard to our agenda this evening? Uh, please call that number, eight hundred seven four one seven one eight zero. And uh, you'll be put in the queue and uh get to ask ask your question momentarily. All right, while we're waiting to see if we have anybody dialing in, uh, gallery or what's left of the gallery? Go ahead, Greg. Awesome. Thanks, Greg. Uh, well said. Okay, so while we're waiting, we'll take this opportunity with uh with counselor items to uh do a little bit of a roundtable, since this is the uh. Uh, the last meeting of this particular council, and in particular, since we have four counselors that um have uh opted to retire. I I find it hard to use that term for you guys. Well, for you guys, not so much for you guys. Uh, I can't help myself sometimes, sorry about that. So um. Uh, why don't we start with the uh, with the the two longest-standing uh counselors? And we'll start with uh Councilor Goodwin, since G comes before O in the alphabet.
Well, okay, thank you. I I hadn't really planned to say anything tonight, but I will thank all my fellow council members for uh. Helping to make this a very fun term, and the two terms before were also a lot of fun, and if a bit stressful at times, frustrating at times. And uh, rewarding all the way through, but I'd really like to thank staff. I'd like to thank Scott and Jim and Maurice and Troy, because they're in the room, and everyone who isn't in the room. Um, you guys work really hard, you have a lot of patience, you put up with us. Um, you sometimes do what we ask you to do, I think that's good. Uh, but mostly, we we do what you tell us to do, and that's also good, because sometimes that's appropriate. Um, yeah, and uh, I hope that the next council uh takes your advice most of the time. And if they don't, are polite when they tell you that they're not going to, so, anyway, take care.
Thanks for that. Kent? Darrell?
Thank you, Kent. Um, it it's interesting to uh come to close after eleven years, almost eleven years, and. I've been thinking about it quite a bit, so I'm keeping my speech under forty-five minutes, because I've man, I've been practicing it for a long time.
Uh, I think we're going to go by form rules, you have three minutes.
Yeah, I, you know, this has been um a very interesting process to go through in your, in one's life, and uh. It has ups and downs like crazy, all the emotions you could possibly imagine uh experiencing as a human being, you get to experience that when you're on council, whether it's good or bad. Um, the uh, working with staff, as Kent said, has been really awesome, just everybody in City Hall that you get to meet. You know, the highlight for me has been all the people, whether it's council members, staff, uh, all the people in town, even when you're getting. Flack from somebody, you know, it's just been the total connection through your your committee meetings, going out and networking in the community. To me, that's where it's at. For for me, that was just an absolute blast, and that's why I kept coming back and running again and. And and going to do it again, because it has been a remarkable experience. Uh, the only disappointment for me this year has been. Um, the, I I was expecting twenty people to run for council, and we just didn't get that number, and I I honestly don't know why that is. I hope people aren't. Um, running away from this process. It's a, it is an amazing experience if you get elected and you get to serve, and ultimately, that's a key word, you're serving. So, thank you all for this journey. This has been a remarkable council. It uh, the yelling matches have been few and far between. It, the yelling matches have been few and far between. It's been really a joy to work with you guys, so thank you.
That's awesome. Thanks for those words, Darrell. Jason? Jason? Well, officially, this entire council is all.
That's true. That's true. No, I, you know, I, we had the, when we had the forum the other night, I, you know, I, I got a chance to say a little piece, but, you know, since we're in public now, I'll, you know, I just wanted to say thank you to, to all the counselors in the room. You know, I'll, I'll go around the room. Darrell, your passion. Kent, your, your attention to detail. Mayor McCormick, your leadership. Kyle, your commitment. Niall, your bluntness. Nigel, your bluntness, I love it. And Sandra, just the history you have with this town. And of course, all, all the staff. I've, I've learned a ton from everybody in here, and, you know, hopefully, if, if, if things go my way next week, I'll, I'll try to, to, to carry on a little bit from, from everybody in, in this room. It's been a really cool experience. We dealt with a lot of adversity over the last four years. I know, I, I know there may not have been some of the contentious items that, you know, past council has, has faced with, with the yelling matches and, and stuff that had gone on, apparently. But, yeah, we, we, you know, COVID was, COVID was a challenge, and I, I thought we did as, as best we could, and I appreciate staff for the amount of work that, that they did. Very difficult times. You know, you never knew who was gonna be out, who was gonna be in, and people working from home and all that stuff. So, really, really difficult time, but I thought we did a good job, and I'm really, really proud to say that I was a member of this council. So, thanks.
Some thanks for that, Jason. Sandra.
When I came on council, I'd been on a whole lot of other boards before. Years and years worth of boards of directors for one purpose or another. And I have to honestly say that this has been the best experience ever of being on a board. The people here have intelligence, they have education, they are logical thinkers, they have a passion for what they believe in, they're willing to respectfully put their point of view forward, they're willing to back away when the election, or when the, the vote doesn't go in their own direction, and they treat each other with such amazing respect. And it has been enlightening for me to work with a group of people who actually thinks that way. It's just, it's, it's a pleasure to come here every, every week. You know you can have your, your say and put your, your idea forward. Everyone has a vote. If, if, if it goes well for you, fine. If it's not your way, fine. And we move on. Darrell commented about a shouting match, and I look back at the eight years that I've been here, and I have no recall ever of anyone raising their voice. Everyone speaks their piece in a thoughtful and, and well-regarded point of view, and we hear them. And it's just marvelous. I, if in fact I come back again, I am crossing my fingers that we're able to keep that moving forward. That would be just amazing to me.
Thanks for those comments, Sandra. Nicely said. Nigel?
I'll try to be blunt. It's, it's truly been a privilege and an honor to serve, and to work with you all has just been amazing. And we're very blessed to have such a strong management team with staff and, and employees. It's just such a pleasure to, to serve on, on two councils. I have to admit, I got involved as the last kick of the can, because I was becoming so disillusioned with modern politics. And in fact, I think politics has become a bit of a dirty word. I've been accused of being a, a bad politician by some people at home, and I used to joke that, I'm not a politician, I'm a community representative. But all jokes aside, I think municipal politics is where it's at. We, we're all different people, we all have different attitudes and different agendas, but we can come into the chamber, have a respectful conversation, and then compromise for the good of the community. I think the layers of government above us, way above us, could learn something from this council and a lot of other municipal councils as well. So I have to say, it's buoyed my faith in democracy. I think in this council chamber, it's alive and well. Hasn't always been easy, I think, starting with the flume. You guys remember that? And now contemplating another massive infrastructure project with the wastewater treatment plant. I think that its council has got some challenges ahead, but I think with the attitude that we see in this room, I think it's not insurmountable at all. I think the future looks very bright. Thank you.
Well said, Nigel. Thank you. Kyle?
How do you follow that up? Hey? Thank you is the first and foremost thought, you know, each and every one of you in this room. You know, all the way from the gallery to the mayor, to the staff at the top, to the bottom. You know, it's been an incredible learning curve. I found within the first six months, I was applying things learned here to other boards and groups. And to not have anybody that's so cantankerous, that it's been unpleasant. You know, I mean, there's been one or two sleepless nights, and, you know, the mental health hasn't always been there in the tip-top shape, but I wouldn't change it. You know, I'm absolutely thankful for the experience, and I will continue to serve the community going forward, and maybe I'll catch up on everything else and come back. On the official side of business, the Matthew Creek Trail Bridge for the Great Connector is gonna be opening on Sunday. They're gonna, the KTS is having a ceremony. I, I can't go without announcing this, so. 11 o'clock in the Platsel, bring your snacks and your bicycle, go see the bridge. It's been years in the making, just like the experience is here. So, again, thank you all.
Thank you, Kyle. Sorry, I'm not sure what's wrong with my throat tonight. I'm not getting choked up, honest. So, you know, it's 11 years for Kent and Darrell. It's also 11 years for me. The three of us ran for council at the same time together back in 2011. I remember vividly sitting down in the Platsel, down by the little, there was a bench by the kiddie fountain down there on Deer Park. And I can remember Kent, Kent walking over, and I don't know if you jumped over the back of the bench, but you certainly leaned over and introduced yourself and said, I understand, we're running for council together. And you said, good luck, and you left. It was pretty awesome. That was actually the first time you and I met was, was at that particular moment. And here we are, 11 years later, amazingly. And Darrell, I got to know you actually through Karen. We were up at the conference center at some event up there, and I think it was some kind of an election event. And there was a whole bunch of mulling around out in the vestibule, or in the, you know, the common area. And we got talking about who was gonna make a good counselor and who wasn't. And I can remember so vividly Karen, I mean, she was adamant that her husband was gonna be the best counselor that Kimberly ever had. And she was pretty loud vocal about that. And, and here we are today. So that was 11 years ago. I, it's just hard to believe that, that it's been that long. And you guys have been incredible counselors over that period of time, marshaling us through many, many, many decisions that we've had to make over that 11 years. And I can't say thank you enough for the service that you guys have provided. Nigel, the first time you and I talked about politics was out, the Rotary Club was helping rebuild one of the trails. Trying to remember, it might have been the Jim Ritchie Trail, as a matter of fact, on, on a weekend once, and we were kind of walking between posts and yakking a little bit, and I told you I was gonna run for mayor. This was back in 2014, I guess it was, yeah, that I was gonna run for mayor. And we had a little conversation about that, and I'm not sure what it was that got you motivated after that, but next thing I know, you're on the ballot, running, running for council. And, yeah, well, I kind of doubt that. But, you know, with respect to the bluntness, I mean, you're an Aussie, man. I mean, it's. Okay, the Aussie heritage, then. Yeah. What, what, what can I say? Anyway, thanks so much. You've done an awesome job here over this last eight years, Nigel. Thank you for that service. And Kyle, having served one term, you and I don't know each other quite as well, but I can tell you that the, the perspective and the service that you've provided over this last four years has been, has been a huge contribution to council. And I kind of see you heading back this way at some point in the future. I didn't, I won't ask how old you are, but you're, I think, the youngest guy sitting around the table here, so you got a, you got a few years to make the call. Yeah, exactly. Anyway, thanks so much for the last four years, Kyle. You've been an important part of this council. So in addition, I guess I want to make a comment to staff, Scott and everybody else on staff. So elections are, are skittish times for staff. You never know who's leaving. Well, you know who's leaving if you're retiring, but you never know who involuntarily may be leaving, or who may be coming in, what the composition of council may be, kind of where the priorities may fall. It's a, it's a time of uncertainty. And to continue with the work that you do right up to the election, and then without missing a beat, move forward with that new council is not an easy thing to do. There is a lot of anxiety associated with that, and you guys don't show that at all, which I think is pretty awesome. It would be a lot more difficult to leave and/or to run again if we knew exactly what was going through your minds. So thanks to you guys for all the support that you provided us over this last four years, and on with the next four, starting Sunday, I guess, we're gonna know who's in place. I know to Jason and Sandra, best of luck as incumbents in the election on Saturday. Running as an incumbent, I think, I'm not sure kind of how you guys have been perceiving this, but I know certainly those of us that have had multiple elections, the, the secret to it all is to believe that you're coming in second. Or in, or in, in the case of the counselors, seventh. You're, I'm gonna be number seven. It, it kind of motivates you to put that pedal to the metal. But you guys have, have made an awesome contribution over the course of the, the last term, and electorate willing are gonna be able to continue that through the next term. I know there are several of, if not all of the candidates, the new candidates in the election that are watching via YouTube tonight. To all of you, best of luck in the election on Saturday. It's hard to believe that we're only, you know, literally four days away now. Seems like yesterday that nominations just closed, but best of luck to everybody on Saturday. We know there will be well over half of you that will be represented on the new council, and we'll look forward to, look forward to the results. Yeah, so with that, we do have an in-camera tonight. So I need a motion to move in camera. Counselor McBane moves, and Counselor Dallam seconds. All those in favor? That motion is carried. Two minutes to clear the room. Thanks, folks. Thanks for being here, guys, as always. Yeah. See you soon.